Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Work/Business Meeting of June 6, 2019. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I just want to say congratulations to all the seniors who are currently dancing at their prom. I hope they have a healthy and safe and fun evening and make life time a lifetime's worth of memories. And the first order business, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the meetings held on April 29th, May 7th, and May 23rd, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to announce that the Treasurer's Report for April 2019 is now available in the Business Office. And without any further ado, we would like to hold our Pride in Putnam Valley. Dr. Wells?
So I want to make sure we have Mr. Burrow here with us, our athletic director, who is supportive and part of this initiative.
Dr. Wells, can you put on the microphone?
Today we celebrate Rebecca Girardi. Come on up, Rebecca. And we also have our athletic director here, Mr. Burrow, who has been very much a supporter of this program that Rebecca has brought to our schools. And that program is the Girls and Women in Sports Day, which is an annual day of observance held to acknowledge the accomplishments of female athletes, to recognize the influence of healthy sports participation for girls, and honors the progress in promoting equality for women in sports. And it's Rebecca Girardi who is responsible for bringing this observance and this celebration to Putnam Valley. And for that, we want to give her the Pride in Putnam Valley because it is a very exciting day for young women in our district. We have volunteers coming in from the high school, we have volunteer coaches, and the girls, very young girls, all the way up the grades, come to learn what it's like to participate in team sports and to be part of an athletic program. And it's a very exciting day. And Rebecca, why don't you say a few words about it because you're the pioneer. You made it happen.
So Girls in Sports is actually a national event that occurs usually, I think, in February. I helped perform one when I was a senior in college. And it basically just introduces girls to many different sports. And ours is actually seven sports now. The first year we did six and now we're up to seven. And it basically just gives them 30 minutes of introduction to basic skills. And what's even more exciting is seeing our own school athletes work with them. My favorite thing is, I think, from two years ago, one of the girls got down on her knees to talk face-to-face with one of our first graders. And to see them connect that way just brings it all to work and it's just great. The coaches come out of it smiling and happy. And hopefully, in another few years, our girls programs in the school will come back with numbers that we need. But it's fun. It's a stressful event, especially this year because of our potential rain and our snow or coldness, but it all worked out.
Wonderful. Yes, please.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that some of the selflessness of this event is recognized as far as Rebecca is concerned. There are many other volunteers as well, but Rebecca brought this to us four years ago. And the fact that she has run it, done all the registrations, all of the shirts, all of the background work, the food, prepping everything, making sure that everybody is organized. And what people don't always know is that she gives back also through all of the booster clubs. So when we have coaches that volunteer that are in-house and kids that are volunteering, they are thanked by giving booster club donation back from Girls in Sports Day to those programs. The other thing that I thought was really excellent was putting together a location, a trifold, and putting on a website anywhere you want to find a particular girl's sport in this area. There was not a spot where you could go to just figure out where to go for youth field hockey, or youth swimming, or any of those different things. And she put this together, and now it's available to all of our young ladies throughout the community and beyond because we do share some of this with our local communities such as Lakeland. So I think that's probably the biggest thanks that we need to give Rebecca is that all of the time and energy that she is giving to this is purely to give back. There's nothing that she is taking out of this outside of just the pride and the good feeling of doing a good job. So thank you so much.
We have a certificate. We have a certificate for Rebecca that reads Pride in Putnam Valley. The Putnam Valley Central School District proudly presents the Pride in Putnam Valley to Rebecca Girardi to congratulate and recognize you for pioneering the Girls in Sports Day in Putnam Valley, which encourages and honors the progress and participation of girls in sports in our schools. Congratulations, Rebecca.
And I just want to say, Rebecca, that I agree with you. The best part is when you see our stu-- we always talk about our student athletes, but when they get a chance to be the leader athlete or the teacher athlete, they get to see that it's more than athletic ability, they can take that into how they are in the world. So that's great. Thank you again. Staying along the lines of acknowledgement. June, it tends to be a month of changes and transitions and goodbyes, and we're going to spread them out over a couple of meetings. We have an acknowledgement that we would like to make this evening.
Well, this is a very special evening for one of our board meetings, board members. This is the last board meeting at this point in his career for this particular run of things that Ralph, where Ralph Smith will be here with us. And we want to make sure that we acknowledge and honor Ralph for his service. We all know that Ralph cares greatly about our schools. He visits the schools almost daily. And he knows all of the, all of our staff, and he cares a great deal about students. They're first in his mind. He wants to know at every meeting, at every time that we meet, is this good for kids? Will this work? Will this be something that will improve the lives of our, of our students? And he's very firm about that. And that's what we need to keep us all accountable and moving forward in our school district, in our schools. So we're very, very appreciative of Ralph's service. And we want to give Ralph a special certificate from the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association. Putnam Valley Central School District is honored to recognize Ralph Smith, whose support of public education, commitment to educational excellence, and dedicated leadership has enhanced the quality of education for all of the students in the district. Congratulations, Ralph.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have been so pleased to be able to be the superintendent when during this time--
For the whole six years, yeah, you were both here together.
Yes, that's right, Ralph. We leave together, right?
Thank you all. I cry at supermarket openings, so I'm not going to say anything more.
And the music. Let's not forget that Ralph brings music.
Well, I was just going to say, don't think we've seen the last of Ralph Smith, even though he's not, he's behind this table, the annual variety show, which he didn't leave when he retired as a teacher. We can't take that guitar out of his hand, nor would we want to. And I just want to add again, it's, you need, you know that expression, common sense is not very common? Well, it is, we like to think it is up here, but Ralph brings some real reality and common sense to the decisions we make. And I for one am going to see, be sorry to see him go, but that's why when Fran said the end of his time on the board now, who knows what the future will bring. So thank you again.
I thank you all. I appreciate it, and I leave everyone in good hands. Thank you.
Okay. We go right to your superintendent's report.
PTA.
Oh, the PTA. Oh, that's right. Casey, you're hiding. Christina, I'm used to seeing you right there. Good. Excellent.
Good evening. My name is Christina Casey, the corresponding secretary for the Putnam Valley PTA. Our elementary, elementary school yearbooks are still available for purchase. Yearbooks are $30 each. To order one, please complete the form and send payment to the PTA mailbox at the elementary school. The form was sent out via email and is posted to our Facebook page. We have some arts and ed events coming up. We recently had Sustainable Sounds with Jennifer Ayers on May 31st for our kindergarten through fourth graders. And author Jonathan Cruck came twice, once for our third graders and once again for our fourth graders. Tomorrow, on June 7th, we have Mr. Fish Phenomenal Physics for our fifth graders, and the Tycoza Drummers on June 21st for our third grade. Tomorrow, Friday, June 7th, is our middle school community barbecue during student lunch periods. Volunteers are needed to help set up, run game stations, and clean up. To sign up, please complete the form that was sent out via email and posted to our Facebook page. Our fourth grade spirit committee is meeting on Wednesday, June 12th, at 7:15 p.m. at the elementary school library. This will be the last meeting of the year and to get ready for the Moving Up ceremony. Save the date for our PTA and Hudson Valley Renegades game on Sunday, June 23rd, at 4:35 p.m. We will be honoring Mr. Carlin at the game. Tickets are $12 each and include a hat. To purchase tickets, go to groupmatics/events/eventsputnamvalley5. A portion of each ticket sale goes back to the benefit, goes back to benefit the PTA, and more info is on Facebook and was emailed out. We invite all fourth graders and their teachers to a yearbook signing breakfast on Monday, June 24th, at 8:00 a.m. Yearbooks will be distributed, and students are encouraged to wear their fourth grade spirit t-shirt. Bagels and juice will be provided. Donations and volunteers are needed for our fourth grade Moving Up ceremony on Tuesday, June 25th, at 10:00 a.m. We will have a reception for our fourth graders and their families. We are looking for donations of refreshments and need volunteers to assist with setting up, serving, and cleaning up. To volunteer, please sign up via the Google form that was emailed out and posted on our Facebook page. On Tuesday, June 18th, we'll be hosting our annual PTA Thank You and Election meeting. This is to thank all of our volunteers for their hard work and to hold our executive board elections. For next year, we have some executive board positions open and are looking for committee chairpersons. Those interested are encouraged to check our website and email us for more information. More information on the time and location of this meeting to follow. To volunteer for any of the events mentioned tonight or to volunteer for upcoming events, please sign up through your PTA account at www.putnamvalleypta.org or email us at info@putnamvalleypta.org and like our Facebook page. We want to thank all of our members, students, teachers, and administrators for helping us to provide exciting programs and events to our students. Some of the events and programs we sponsored this year included: One Book One School Initiative at the Middle School, and the book was Out of My Mind; Elementary School Yearbooks; Elementary and Middle School Pictures; the Three for Me Program at the elementary school; grade level events; field trips such as Medieval Times and Sturbridge Village; arts and education events throughout the year; scholastic school book fairs; elementary school class parents program; our annual holiday reads event; annual grandparents and special persons Dr. Seuss reading extravaganza; our Red Ribbon Week at the Middle School; guest speakers at some of our general PTA meetings; the spelling bee competition; staff appreciation luncheons; the middle school community barbecue; and the fourth grade Moving Up reception, yearbook breakfast, and spirit t-shirts; and fundraisers such as Original Works, Pocketbook Bingo, Car Magnets, Hudson Valley Renegades, 31 Fundraiser, and West Point Hockey Game. So we want to thank everybody, and we look forward to another exciting year next year. Thank you.
And Christina, thank you for always being here at the meetings to share that information with us. We can always count on you. Now, Dr. Wells? So I too want to make a special point of expressing gratitude to the PTA for raising the funds so that we can have these enrichment activities for our students and that we can provide the extras that make schools special for our students. So thank you very much for that. A few things that we're about lately. We were able to provide the assessment and have a sort of a ceremony for Una Park, who will be our first SEAL of Bilinguacy recipient this year on her diploma, and we will have her at the next board meeting so the board can meet her and we can celebrate this next achievement for our schools. And this will be something on an ongoing basis. We'll be locating, identifying those students who we are proud to say have bilinguacy skills and can have that seal on their diploma. I also want to talk a bit about the Sustainability Fair. Would you mind, Maureen, if we, there are so many pictures, we'd like to just show some of them. We heard a presentation on sustainability in the district last, the last board meeting, and Jen Bruno and Liz Bross really organized with the administration of the, of the elementary school this incredible day of attention to sustainability. And they, we went to the pond, for example, where they, the groundspeople in the district have created a boardwalk so students can walk without, you know, getting involved in too much mud. And we had Self there, we had Sarah Bross, our student who was on the board. She was there helping the students with learning what's in the pond water. And it's really incredible, the size of the pond, it's all been cleared so that we can use this as a science, as part of our science program. We also had Dave Spittle there. He talked to the students about the use of solar and those, the towers that we have now, the poles where we have a solar display and where students can see the way solar moves, the wind, the wind propellers. And he talked about how energy is created. We had Mr. Oliverio talking about the history of Putnam Valley in the, in that wonderful learning space that's open now in the back of our school, outdoor learning. And we had the food pantry talking about nutrition. That's the food pantry there, talking about nutrition and how the, these representatives talked about how we can help those in our community with food insecurity to have better nutrition through the generosity of our community. And talking about sustaining, sustaining life through food. It was a wonderful, wonderful day for all of the students. And what was great was to see all the spaces in the school that we don't always pay attention to, the outdoor spaces, and to understand that sustainability is part of the way we think in Putnam Valley. So it was a very special opportunity. We are now involved in many of the award ceremonies at the high school. We've had awards for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And this was started just a few years ago when Dr. Entery came. One of the things that we talked about was having awards, awards for the younger, for the classes below the senior. And we always used to have senior awards sort of after, you know, the, the graduation or at the time of graduation. This was after they had written their applications for college, and now these awards can be used as part of their, you know, their background and resumes for college, but also to demonstrate to other students in their classes that there are ways to be noticed and ways to be recognized by teachers for the work they do in their classes. And there are opportunities for many students to, to receive awards. We also had our spotlight, our last of the spotlight awards, again at the high school, the opportunity for students who are recognized for a variety of things, not just academics, but how they actually put effort forth in the classrooms. And what I love about the spotlight program is that teachers talk personally about how these students have performed. And the parents, in all of these cases, parents get to see how their students are seen by their teachers and what their students have accomplished. So both of those, awards and the spotlight, were really very important moments this week. We also had a chorus concert, and the music was some of the best ever in a chorus concert. And again, the chorus was quite substantial, and it's great to see the kind of involvement in music in our schools. I also wanted to mention that today I was at the Gateway Chamber of Commerce to talk about one of our students, Caitlin Cohn, who received an award, a scholarship award for her years. She'll be going to the University of Maryland to study chemical engineering. And we were with six other, six other high schools in the area, and each of the superintendents was able to speak about the students, the student who is going to be receiving the scholarship award tomorrow. There's the Hope for Youth Scholarship, and Gavin Mitchell, one of our music student, will be receiving a scholarship from Hope for Youth. So this is a very wonderful time of year when we see the fruits of all of the efforts that our students have put forth, that our teachers have put forth, and it's an opportunity to see the culmination of a great deal of work, just the way we had these culminating activities with the Sustainability Fair. This is what, this is the learning that took place, and this is how we can celebrate that learning. So that's my report for tonight.
Do you want to talk about this? We even had a--
Oh, did we talk? I thought we talked about--
I don't know. Did we talk about the Washington trip at--
I think I did talk about the Washington trip--
Oh, we did? Okay.
But--
How we started.
Would you like to say something, Mr. McCarthy?
You have to go stand.
Well, just go up to one of these.
Because it was very successful, and I did talk about it. I was mentioning how it would begin, something that we think will continue.
So I think we--
Actually, we were met while you were on the trip.
While you were leaving.
That's right. Yes, yes.
We were leaving at 6 o'clock the next morning--
Yes, that's right.
From this meeting. That's right.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Putting me on the spot tonight.
I'm sorry.
So we just wrapped up our seventh grade parent info night this evening at the middle school, and it looks like we had around 50 families interested this evening to come out early in projection of going on our trip next year. We do have a date set of May 6th through May 8th with World Strides. We had a very successful trip this year. We took approximately 50 students to Washington, D.C. on May 8th through May 10th. And I think our chaperones and our students really had a trip of a lifetime. And the one thing that resonates with me is we got to know our students very differently than we do as educators within our buildings on a daily basis. Seeing students in classrooms and in hallways and at lunch and recess is very different than spending 12 to 14 hours with them on buses, at monuments, in food courts. And it was really powerful. It really made an impression on me. I had gone to Washington, D.C. before with my family, but to go with these children and see them interact with food vendors and buying apparel and going into gift shops and taking pictures in front of monuments was extremely powerful. And we're hoping to grow this trip. We had 50 this year. I hope we have 100 or 130 next year. And we want all future eighth graders to be able to go, which is why we have this parent info meeting, because it gives families an earlier date to start saving for that trip. And World Stride does a nice job of setting up accounts for family members to put in, and we want to offer some fundraisers that our student government's going to be involved. And it was a nice event. Actually, one of our eighth grade students, Sean Van Riper, put together a Google slideshow with music that I was able to show the parents this evening. And it's a 12-minute slideshow, and we watched about eight minutes, and I'm like, I don't want to keep you here all night, but they were so engaged. I'm going to send the presentation out to all seventh grade families so they do have that information. And as of right now, until June 10th, there is, I call it an early bird special, where if families sign up for the trip for next year, that they can sign up for $49 as opposed to signing up for $99 after June 10th. So there's a discount of signing up now, and then, of course, they can take out what's called an insurance policy where they get all of their money back if something were to come up where their children weren't able to go. So we have some systems in place to grow this trip, and Dr. Wells gave us some feedback on some places we'd love to visit, but we need to work on that now so that we're able to get tickets early. And really, to go for the amount of money that we were to go in for three days and have it all-inclusive was quite special. And we hope to have this trip for many, many years to come. And made an impression on me, it made an impression on our children, our families, and our chaperones. And all of the families were able to follow us on our Remind app. I must have taken close to 400 photos along the journey, everywhere from rest stops to buses, to eating at the hotel, to all the monuments. Some parents actually commented they felt like they were on the journey with us. And that was, that was really special, and I appreciated that greatly. And, you know, this was our maiden voyage, first time in 20 years, and we hope that it goes many, many, many more years.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, I think it was courageous to make, to be the first because it had to go well, and it did. It went very, very well.
And the students made that possible--
Yes.
--and the families.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There was one other point I wanted to make tonight, something that I wanted to let people know about. If you remember, we had a one-act play contest in February. And with the help of Dan Mahoney and students in our school, those plays are now posted on YouTube.
Oh, wow.
And you can link directly to them from the high school link on our website.
Okay.
And I urge our community to watch those plays, to understand the depth of feeling and knowledge and capacity of the students at Putnam Valley, those three one-act plays. So please do. You'll see a breadth of humanity in those plays.
Okay. I'd like to open it up to public contribution on any of the listed agenda items.
Just two quick additions to Dr. Wells. Just for those in the community, the pond is known as the Cranberry Pond, if you aren't familiar with it. That is the name of the pond behind the elementary school. And just also for the community, with regard to solar and the wind fan, that's a wind fan, it's not driven by solar, it actually works when the solar isn't working. We have over, we have 100 panels just on the transportation building alone. We have 100 solar panels there, and they're on throughout the district. And besides solar and the wind, we also have geothermal heating. So we're doing a lot for sustainability, and that was what was being presented there.
Right. And also, there's going to be, there is going to be a display at the schools of, so kids can see the mathematical--
The impact.
--impact of, of the use of this. So there's a lot of excitement around that here.
Okay. Any other public or anything from the board? Then let's move right into new business, starting with number one, Mr. Ferraro.
Resolved recommendation of superintendent schools to appoint Daniella Sinapi to a four-year probationary term as an elementary .5, Special Education .5 teacher, commencing on September 1st, 2019, and terminating on August 31st, 2023. The tenure area of .5 Elementary, .5 Special Education at the middle school on Step 1A, the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Sinapi holds childhood education 1 through 6 and student with disability 1 through 6 certifications. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term and may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two.
Resolved unrecommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Alexandra Gazola as a .6 art teacher at the middle school effective September 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020 on Step 1BA, prorated of the PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Gazola's New York State Art K-12 certification is pending and is anticipated June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Questions or comments? I just want to add that Ms. Gazola is homegrown. She is a Putnam Valley graduate, and we welcome her. All in favor?
Aye.
You have to come up and shake her hand. She would have to come up and shake her hand. It's hurting, hurting.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you so much.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
So grateful. Don't stop it. Thank you.
And just before-- And just before we go on to the next agenda item, we, last meeting, we appointed a teacher at the elementary school. And her son was coming home from college, so, so she couldn't do the walk across the table to shake our hands. So we'd like to formally welcome Deborah Verdi. Did I say that right? Verdi. And she is special education? Right, kindergarten. 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 See, she has all the energy a kindergarten teacher needs. Welcome.
Thank you. No, no, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number three.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Ronald Ramirez to the probationary position of bus driver effective September 1st, 2019, with a minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the Transportation Department at step seven of the CSE salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Just for clarity, it's a Roland, so we don't make sure we're appointing the right person, not Roland, not Ronald.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Just to make sure.
Well, and welcome, because there is a bus driver shortage. I'm delighted we have a bus driver to appoint. All in favor?
Aye.
Number two. More good news. I mean, four. Whatever that number. Number two, bus driver. Number four, resolution.
Resolved on recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Patricia McQuinnan to the probationary, to the probationary position of bus driver effective September 1st, 2019, the minimum probationary period of eight weeks, October 27th, 2019, and a maximum of 52 weeks, September 1st, 2020, at the Transportation Department on step seven of the CSE salary schedule.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five.
Resolved on recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Tara O'Connell Per and RN from the district effective June 28th, 2019, as per document number 179/19 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools to accept, to accept a check in the amount of $31,976 from the Putnam Valley Educational Foundation Incorporated to fund the 2019 grants accepted by the foundation, referencing the official minutes of this doc, of this meeting as document 178/19, and the 2018 grants in the amount of $14,677.36, referencing the official minutes of this meeting as document 180/19.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I would just like to say that these grants are, again, one of those wonderful generous components of the district community that allows us to do things that we otherwise could not do. Trips that are taken, ideas in the classroom. These are, these are the kinds of innovative opportunities that we couldn't actually accomplish without these additional funds. So we are very grateful. And there is going to be a-
Their largest fundraiser is casino night.
Yes, this, this Saturday. This Saturday. And there's still an opportunity to participate in something that is really, really significant in our community.
And gets immediately back to the children.
It goes right to the children, right to the classrooms.
All in favor?
Aye.
With gratitude. Number seven.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to continue the moratorium on approving the admission of non-resident children of professional staff who were not previously enrolled in district schools during the 2018-19 school year. Siblings of those students currently enrolled in the district may attend with specific approval of the board and the payment of tuition.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Number one.
Resolved to approve items 2 through 8 as appears within the consent agenda section of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're accepting two non-resident children of faculty members to attend the district. And this is following up these children of, and they've been related to the district. We're authorizing the superintendent to enter into agreement with the non-union staff members. And those are like Maureen and those high-level people throughout the district. We're authorizing the superintendent to enter into an agreement for the testing of a classified student by Blight Children's Hospital. We're authorizing addition to the substitute tutor list. We're proving that Jeremy, our assistant superintendent, in July attends the International Baccalaureate Conference from July 18th through July 21st. And this is where he'll be joining educators from around the world to study this program. We're approving additions to the substitute tutor list. And-
Summer workers.
Yes. Wait, no, I just have all these extra notes I was going to tell you about, but I decided not to. And we're approving summer workers to work on the technology program.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I'd like to open it up to public comment on any topic. And without, if there's none, anything else from the board? All right. I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Good night and happy June, everybody. Stay safe the last couple of weeks.